The, uh, the, um, application concerning Stone Ridge at Milford for the 40B residential complex, a couple of housekeeping items we have, um, minutes of the meeting from the Robcham Village, I need a motion to accept from July 5th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion by John, second, and by Mark. All those in favor? I suppose that's unanimous. We also have a, um, minutes from the July 17th meeting. These were, both of these, by the way, were passed out in review by due people before. I have a motion for the July 7th on the Stone Ridge.
Motion.
Motion by John, seconded by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. And Charlie, this is, uh...
Bridgestone.
Yes, sir. You, your choice.
Okay. And I have a motion to accept these minutes. Jim? Seconding?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, so... Pass those down. We just made Melissa very happy.
Some paper there. It's passing around.
Okay. Um, you gentlemen ready to rock and roll? Everybody looks, uh, rested and tanned? Is that for the board members?
You're pretty pale.
Pretty pale and tired. Um, okay, we're gonna, uh, let's pick up where we left off. We've got draft decisions in here. Um, I see in someone in the audience, there's someone in the, would you like to speak? You all set? Okay. Um, we have draft decisions in here. We've got, um, red line versions. We've got some, um, back and forth that happened with council over the last few days. I'd like to go to the latest red line version. Do you have that from today?
They produced it, so you'll be, if you sent me, they have, and you must have, because you sent it to me.
All right, let's...
You guys say July 11th, but it's not the red line. It's not one you would have before.
All right, I believe I asked this question before, but I wanna, um, I think I have it in my last one. Uh, I'm just gonna go to page three on this particular one. And let me, all right, so, I just wanna briefly go to the top, because I wanna get some numbers in here that are approximate. So, uh, on page three, on the top of the page, we have percentages outlined there with studios, one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom units. Originally, from the last meeting, I had in here 5% on studios, 40% on one bedroom units, 45% on two bedroom units, and 10% on three bedroom units. Now, I'm seeing that changed to...
No, then, I'm sorry.
Now, I'm seeing that changed to today's revision of zero studios, 53% one bedrooms, 37% two bedrooms, and 10% three bedrooms. Now, go ahead.
Sorry about that.
Man, you got a hell of a tan. You must have been gone a month.
I, I wish. It's natural.
Be on sight.
I think it, that might be from the Robcham application. This, our project has, has never included studios.
They've never included, uh, percentages either, so you might be thinking, well, one of the, you know, these things run together.
Well, I think I, when I asked for them before, I think what we did is, we probably took those percentages, carried them into here. So now the question becomes, what are the percentages? Do you even know?
These are the correct percentages.
So the percentages from today are the correct ones?
Correct, correct.
53% one bedroom, 37% two bedrooms, and 10% three bedrooms. And out of those, you know what your affordables are gonna be?
Yes.
Can you give us those? Percentage, you know, as far as the counts?
They're pro rata, so 25% of the...
One bedrooms?
Of the one bedrooms will be, you know, 25% will be one bedrooms, 25% will be two bedrooms, 10% will be, I'm sorry, 25%...
Would be the three bedrooms.
The 10% will be three bedrooms.
25% of 37%, 25% of...
Yeah, so you're taking your, your percentage based on your application, and you're applying them to those?
Correct.
To that, to that category.
Because there's no distinction within the units between the affordables and the market rate units, um, so...
Now, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, I asked the same applicant, and I wanna be consistent. Out of the one bedroom units, on the, just the affordable side, what would be, what would you anticipate the market rent for the one bedroom units? And what would you consider the affordable rental component of the one bedroom units? I'm sure you've got that outlined in your performer.
I do.
Just so that the board has an idea. I wanna be consistent. We did the same thing with the, um, with the Robcham piece, I believe you did, almost similar to the other project. Um, I'm not gonna hold you to the number, but approximately.
So, um, roughly $1,400...
For the ones?
For the one bedrooms, um, 1,700 to 2,200 for the two bedrooms, and 2,200 to 2,500 for the three bedrooms.
2,200 to what?
25.
25 for the three?
Correct.
Okay. Now, is that the market rate, or is that the affordable component, or is that the combination of both?
That's the combination of both.
Okay. All right. You should get with Robcham, because your numbers are better than his. Oh, his are like...
We're gonna build a better property.
I mean, his is, his are much higher. Okay. That, that makes, that makes reasonable sense. Okay, let's go to page four. Board members, as you can see in red, uh, these are some, some of the language changes. Can you kind of go over section nine and paraphrase your, um, your delineation in red?
Happy to. And for the record, Chris Ranier from Goldston and Storrs, and sorry for being the last one here. Um, what our, our changes were intended, and, and let me just take a step back, because when I went through the list of, um, documents to the decision, um, at least one of them wasn't on there, and I think it's just more of a nature of when this draft started. It, it predated a June 11th letter that we received from the Milford Water Company. Uh, and to paraphrase, what that letter said was that our project, uh, at 272 units would, would require about 29,800 gallons of water a day. Um, and I don't think it's any secret to this board that we've been working with the Milford Water Company, although maybe it hasn't progressed as fast as we would have liked, to understand what it would take for them to, uh, increase the capacity, um, to allow for water at this site and other projects. In that June 11th letter, um, what they did was look at the cumulative anticipated impacts from our project, Robcham and Burt Street, and what the Dilla Street well field is currently pumping, and that would, when those are all added together, that gives about roughly 42,000 gallons under current conditions to the town. They believe that Dilla Street isn't pumping, um, at what it could produce, and so they wanna look into that. Um, the, working with the Milford Water Company, uh, and I wanna get into that more, uh, we understand that, uh, in this, as summarized in this letter, with improvements to the Dilla Street well field, they think they can increase the pumping, uh, yield at Dilla Street to 675,000 gallons a day. So when our project at 272 units plus Robcham at their original number, plus Burt Street are added, at, to the increased yield, that would leave 595,000 gallons a day of excess water capacity.
Excess water. After your, after your consumption...
That's correct.
And the others' consumption.
That's correct. So what we've been doing, uh, is, is working with the water company to, and we had hoped, and while we were asking for continuances, we had hoped to understand what would it, working with our consultant, Tate and Howard, what would it take to do the work to increase to this 675,000 gallon a day number? Um, and really, they need to take it in bite-sized chunks. The first thing that they wanna do is have Tate and Howard do a study, uh, to understand what, what it may take to increase, uh, to do work on the well, the wells themselves, the pumps.
You mean to tell me they did not have any of that information?
Uh, they've got, it sounds like, some of that information, but to take the next level to do the actual work, um, the Gattir's Company and actually the Robcham developer have agreed each to provide $25,000 to the Milford Water Company, so they can, uh, allow Tate and Howard to take that next level step.
So, and I wanna, I want this board to understand, so that when the water company was questioned, and their answer back to us, that we would have a questionable aspect of water in 2027, and when I asked the question, what is your maintenance process, and what are you doing, they indicated that they were planning all along of what needed to be done to increase water to the town, the town residents. So really, they're making you pay for that. Okay.
And, and, um, I haven't been in all the conversation. I think there's the, there's another well field, Israel, I'm gonna forget the name.
Godfrey Brook.
Godfrey Brook. That may be on their agenda, things to do first, but Dilla Street...
But is that the well they're trying to get online, Graff, Godfrey Brook?
No, Dilla Street is what they're trying to do first. Godfrey Brook, they actually, they actually just noticed today, they're doing a multimillion-dollar borrowing, so they gotta get approved from the DPU, to take care of a number of projects, including Godfrey Brook. But the project that they're working with and with, with Steven Zeif is the Dilla Street well. That's the one that can be, the Godfrey Brook, even with full funding available, it's gonna be a long cross project.
Five-year project.
This is the one that can be done most readily, and that's the one the water company is working with these guys to try to get that done most readily.
That well should have been online years ago, but let's not go there.
Well, and that's, and frankly, I mean, you've really put your finger on it. I mean, that is what we've been struggling with, is, um, and why we'd hoped to advance some conversations with the water company, that the numbers that they're giving us could, and, and again, these are very speculative, but maybe it's 1.7 to 2 million dollars to do this work to Dilla Street. And how that shared and imposed on, but from the water company, on the Gattir's Company, on Steven Zeif, on the Burt Street developer, that is yet to be, you know, fully articulated. They wanted to do the water study first. But that's something, frankly, we've really been wrestling with, is that we need, for 272 units...
You need answers.
We need, we, we need 29,000 gallons of water a day. But they're asking the developers to provide money that will provide, call it 600,000 gallons of excess capacity to other users in the system. So there's a little bit of an equitable issue that we, we'll need to wrestle with, with the water company. But frankly, it would, it's that uncertain cost, um, that i- is one of the things we're wrestling with. And, and also, as you'll, as, as we can look at in, uh, paragraph number nine here, I tried to lay out these facts, which are a little bit more, um, up-to-date than maybe the Robcham facts, and I think some of this language was dealing with, um, some facts that existed when, when that other project was moving forward. So I was trying to incorporate that June 11th letter, but also frankly, uh, the Gattir's Company owns a different site than the other projects. They've, they've got a much larger property. They, due to the uncertainty of the water company, both in terms of cost, in terms of time of delivery, uh, they've been forced to start investigating the feasibility of doing an onsite drinking water well. At some point, uh, if the water company isn't, uh, able to provide some certainty as to when water will be available, or if the cost is too high, and it's feasible to do an onsite well, you, you could see that it would tip, and it would make more sense for...
Financials, it's all money.
Right?
Is it scientifically doable? I mean, if it, if you can get a private well in there that can be approved by all the approvals that you need in that location, which...
Right.
Do you have any indication that that's even feasible?
Have you done any testing over there, right, yet?
Uh, we, we haven't done any testing yet, but it's our, we're planning on doing that, because it's not, you know, in further to what Chris was explaining, it's not simply the issue of cost as it relates to, you know, making the, if it's $2 million, and we're gonna, you know, pay a million out of that, the question also becomes, what happens if Robcham doesn't move forward? Does the D, does Milford Water Company, can they take our million bucks and say, okay, well, a million bucks is gonna get you, you know, 250,000 gallons of water? Great. But they may say, no, we need the full loaf. And so we have, uh, we don't have certainty even on that front, um, and that, again, is part of what we've been trying to work out with the water company, which we just haven't gotten to. So, um, you know, there, there are a number of issues that we need to, um, vet out, uh, but none of them have, uh, a price tag that is, um, not going to be significant.
Well, and also, please remember that whatever shortfall doesn't come from you guys is being paid by the ratepayers. So...
Yeah, if I, interject, Mr. Jim, too, so, you know, we have that basic condition that's in all three of these, uh...
Right.
The other two will be in this one, that nobody gets a foundation permit or a building permit unless they've got a approved, uh, supply of water.
Water has a lot of...
It's always been presumed in all three cases, that's gotta be the Milford Water Company, or five years from now, maybe the town of Milford, but the same entity. Now, it is possible that they could do it through a private well and be able, but they still would have to be able to prove that they've got sufficient capacity at the right pressures to make it work. Uh, so the condition that you have in there, and I, I think you'll retain, in some discussion about aspects of it, will govern ultimately whether they, it, it, no disrespect to them, but it becomes their problem instead, whether they work with the water company or not, or can do it privately or not, and not something that your board should really get in the middle of. You certainly wanna know about it, but, um...
Right, and that's why, that's why I brought it up, 'cause I wanna, I wanna make sure everybody's aware of it. Um, and I get it.
Is, um, is 30,000 gallons the utmost you'll ever need? I mean, is that your max that you need?
Uh, 30,000 gallons.
It's 29,800.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the, um, the amount that would be for the, the residential, uh, land, so yes, that's correct.
But I mean, if, if you ran it...
If we develop the rest of the site, is that your...
You're gonna need more, of course.
I know you'll need more, but I'm just wondering, is this the max you're anticipating?
Yes.
In other words, will it be lower most of the time, and this is the maximum you'll ever need? The maximum flow you're gonna need?
Correct. This is calculated using the peaking factor, and, you know, assuming that everybody's got their faucets on and flushing their, you know, soils at the same time.
So 29,800 max.
Yeah. If anyone would like to see that letter, I've got that June 11th letter.
No, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we were...
All right, so, so we, so now that the board's got a good idea of, you know, where, where you people stand concerning the aspect of the water, and it's, it's understandable from our end, um, and clearly, um, and I, residential component impact like this is clearly a major impact for water. As far as the way the language is written here, uh, I think we can button that up a little bit, Jerry, off the outside.
Well, yeah, we can. But one important factor in this language, it, it becomes an important issue in this case, which is the question of the number of units.
Right.
Right now, the way you've anticipated going forward, the way the original draft was, uh, it was simply a reduction of...
Forty.
Forty units, down to 232.
Right.
They are now proposing through their change is something different, and it may be better that they explain it to you, but roughly, I think what they're saying is that they'd accept the 232 if they could only access the Milford Water Company water, but they would wanna be able to have 272 if they had their own private water supply. If I'm misstating that correctly.
Well, I...
So I, but, but what's important to keep in mind, too, I, I think what they were thinking is that your reduction in units flowed solely from water. Well, it was more than that. You were wanting to see a reduction for a number of other reasons, including traffic, try to improve the impacts in traffic in the area, and a number of other reasons.
And, and the site.
Two are tied together together.
And while we're on that aspect of units, um, and I'll dive into the, the letter from your consultant on the wetlands, and from our consultant as well, um, the, um, man, I just went blank.
I've done a minute counts myself.
Oh.
It's gonna get worse in five years.
No, there was, there was a reason, there was a reason why I wanted to go to that, and I just lost it.
I've done that before juries at times.
Yeah, it's just, uh...
It's very sad.
Went right over my headline.
There's actually one, one clarification I'd like to make, Ms. Moody, on the, on the number of units, if I could. Um, so, um, the, the draft that we received proposed 232 for the number of units on the project. We, we filed the 272. Um, we understand that where Robcham landed, which is a project of about our size, was about a 9% unit reduction. So in the revised draft that we provided, we actually put in...
Sorry, you tried to bump it up.
242, which would be the same proportionate reduction...
Yeah.
...as was done for Robcham. Uh, although, Mr. Moody, you're entirely correct that, um, if the concern of the, um, number of units was, was being driven, and, and in my understanding, it was being primarily driven about water availability, and we're able to do a private, um, onsite well...
Actually, it wasn't. It was also site.
Okay.
And the reason is that, as we've talked about, this residential application is being jammed into five or six acres, where Robcham's piece is a much larger piece to begin with. Matter of fact, we required him to even provide boulevard entrances in, in separation lanes. Here, we even talked about doing, with him, emergency exit, uh, exit road, which is now one of the reasons I wanted to bring, bring up. And I wanna discuss that now, since we're talking about the unit count, and we're talking about a form of egress in an emergency situation. As I look at the site plan, and I've looked at the building designs, and I've looked at the Restaurant Depot, if the Restaurant Depot aspect during the day is full, and we have an emergency situation, and we don't have a second form of egress, where are all of these people gonna evacuate to? To be able to be pulled out of that location? Let's say we have a massive explosion, God forbid, on the Restaurant, Restaurant Depot site. We're evacuating this entire area. There isn't even a landing platform where we can have all of these people go to if they've gotta be lifelighted out of there. There's no room. So, as I thought about this, that was a major reason for the number of, reduction of units, because it's people count, car count, but when I'm looking at the balance of the site, do we need to have an area cleared for an emergency situation as time goes on? An, an emergency evacuation area? So if there is that catastrophic event, all of these people that'll live in there, which are hundreds, where are they gonna go? How are they gonna escape out of their buildings when they can't go to the parking lot because they're in the middle of a giant, um, disaster? There's gotta be an area where they can all flow to, so that they can be at least, the emergency aspects can be handled somewhere on that site, 'cause they can't get out. So, I know no one's thought about that, but I think we need to think about that as we get through this final draft. Whether we, you know, clear an acre and a half over there, whether we make sure that a helicopter can get in there, whether we can have a triage set up area, so that the fire department, police and fire have an, an area that is free and unencumbered from buildings, and God forbid anything happens up there, and, and we've seen it happen in other parts of the states. Um, the wildfires were a good example, if there was an explosion. So, I, I'm bringing this up, I know it's last minute I'm bringing it up, but I want it to be considered, whether we try to put something in there, once you hit a level of occupancy, um, and we get an area cleared out over there, so at least we've got an evacuation zone for emergencies. So I'd like you to consider that and really think about that. I don't know what the board members' thoughts are on that.
I had, that was one of the areas I considered, maybe back.
That's not on land. That's not the land.
I know.
I'm talking about over here.
If you wanna put it right here, I know...
Well, I'm just, it's somewhere over here. As they develop, it's gonna get full, and there'll be parking lots in the future that someone could escape to. But I'm kinda concerned about that particular situation. So that was all part and part of the, the 240 that recommendation. So if you had to take a look at that, that would be helpful. If no one has any questions concerning that, I, I'll move on with the red line versions. Do you have any other comments?
Well, I was, I was just gonna say, I think, I think we can look at that, it's, it's a, um, a, a bit of a new comment.
Yes, it is.
I mean, I think, um, you know, it is a fairly wide road. Our building will be fully sprinkled, and, uh, I think you, you pointed out, um, a, a great point in that...
But it's gonna be gas. It is gonna be gas.
The, the heat, is it, is a...
There's gonna be gas or propane. I'm sure it's not oil.
Yeah. It's not gonna be electric.
And I think, in one of the first, in the first hearings, we were talking about how this, this project site, um, had been and is permitted for some office development, um, but that, for a variety of reasons, has not come to fruition. Uh, we're hopeful that converting a portion of the site to a residential use will provide a catalyst to bring forward some other, other uses out there. So I think the board chair is, is right, that, um, there will be future roadways, there will be future, uh, parking, parking areas, uh, that we hope follow closely after this project.
Right, and, and again, I'm not asking you to do this during a construction process. I think this has gotta be planned, um, and I'm sensitive to the cash flow aspect of, of how things work. And at some point along the line, when an occupancy level starts to hit a certain level, an area that needs to be cleared out and prepared, and we can talk about how that can be prepared, just in case, God forbid, we have that type of tragedy.
Um, yes, I, I will certainly take a look at that, and we'll look at the...
And if we need a work session to do that before the next one, that's fine.
Um, that's fine. Um, I, I would also just kinda, to Chris's point, point out that, you know, there, there will be fewer car vehicular traffic through here, fewer people, um, with this project compared to what would have otherwise been...
Yeah, with the office complex.
...post, so it is a net reduction, even though right now, you know, we're adding. Um, on the unit count...
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a net reduction, but it's a long-term overnight. So it's a, it's a, it's a living, it becomes now homes, if you wanna call it homes. That was a residential subdivision. This is basically a residential component, which is, becomes a 24/7 living arrangement. Tragedies can happen. All I'm saying is, as you continue to build this out, when this is, gets done, a temporary aspect for an emergency evacuation, um, would probably be a good idea. That can be eliminated as you continue to build out, of course. And I'm not talking about pavement, or I'm just talking about some nice flat area that's supportive, that maybe a helicopter, if they need to get in, by a department triage team, something that they have to be able to, uh, address, anything that's, that's serious of nature.
As it relates to the unit count, uh, when we had talked about the reductions of, to the 232 units, we had really not, um, gotten, uh, any feedback from the water company at that time about the cost potentially of that well, uh, or rather, rehabilitating Dilla Street. Um, it's a, it's a, gonna be a significant cost, and while 10 units may seem like a small, um, number, it, it does have a meaningful impact, um, to the pro forma, and we would respectfully request that we be at least, uh, reduced to the same level as, as the Robcham project.
Proportionately, you're asking for...
Proportionately. Uh, which results in 10, 10...
That's the 242.
That's the 242.
Again, and I'm not, I'm, when I say this, I'm not arguing against that. You're right, that was probably about 9%. But then when you look at the Burt Street, it's much, much more than that. They originally came in with 300 units, and were ultimately approved for 168, so there's no necessary proportionality in the whole thing, but I get it.
Not only that, they were reduced, but then we also, we also ended up having the boulevard...
Right.
On top of that added.
There were a lot of other conditions.
There was a lot of stuff that was added in relation to that reduction.
But to help, but I, I think it, it probably is a juncture that your members should, on a interim basis, amongst yourselves, decide where you wanna, where you want this to be. Do you want the 232? Do you, are you willing to accept the 242? And then, you, are you willing to include in that the option that if they do provide their own water supply, the 272? So those are the three numbers I think you're working with here. And it'd probably be helpful to the applicants and to yourselves to sort of decide right now on a preliminary basis where you're headed on that issue, before you even go over some of the other ones.
Even if it's well, I, I'm not in favor of 272?
Right.
Um, it's just the, it's, it's really the, the condensed portion of the site, the challenges that the site brings within that residential component community. If there was offering of, of, um, some type of facilities, whether it be playgrounds, parks, pools, walking trails, not walking trails, we have walking trails, dog parks, I mean, we can certainly take a look at it, but I, I'm not in favor of, of 272 units, even with the wells.
What about the 242 versus the 232? What about the 242 versus the 232?
Well, let's, I'd like to get through a couple of these issues, only because I think we have a disconnect concerning the wetlands, and I'd like to get some clarity on that, because what I'm, what I asked for originally never happened, and I'm seeing Lucas going back and forth and, and with our, with our consultant, and they're not agreeing on the notice of intent that's, that's probably 12 years old and wetlands grow. So, I understand that the Restaurant Depot went in under an amended, amended notice of intent, but I also know that that particular site had a larger footprint building on it versus what's there now. So, things get moved, the building lines are getting moved maybe. I saw the wetlands on the site where this, this site is. I'm really kinda concerned of the growing of the wetlands. I understand the conservation, asked the conservation board, has that, that's under their jurisdiction. I just want an answer of why, when I requested to take a look and try and update and re-flag the wetlands, I never got that answer. And I never got that work done. So you didn't feel it necessary, correct? You never felt it was necessary to go out there and re-identify the wetlands and have a botanist go out there and see if anything's grown? So that was never done, because you felt that, that the, the stuff that was done way back in '07 was adequate for the site, and nothing grew. So wetlands don't grow, is that what you're trying to tell me? I'm asking you.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'll, I'll do my best to pretend to be a wetland scientist, and then maybe I'll turn it over to the wetland scientist.
Wetlands, wetlands do grow. I mean, physically, I've witnessed it, both from a botanist's side, from an engineering side, but I, I just, blows my mind that this was not looked at, again.
So, let me...
No, and with all due respect, by the way.
No, I understand. And I understand this has been going back and forth. So I wanna start from the, from the end, which is, we totally agree that there will be an approval necessary from the Conservation Commission under the State Wetlands Protection Act. Absolutely. I think that the distinction is whether that needs to be in the form of a new notice of intent, or given the fact, and I can let Matt Varell from Lucas Engineering Environmental speak, or whether the fact that we have an existing order of conditions that has been properly extended and under the State Wetlands Act serves to confirm the, the validity of the wetlands delineation, whether it's possible that the way forward that the Conservation Commission would agree to would be an amendment to the existing order of conditions. So totally agree with the board that there will be a process under the State Wetlands Protection Act with the Conservation Commission. Wanted to have the flexibility to either, in, in the Concom themselves, I mean, now we're, now we're in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, they may say to us when we get to them, you know what, we would prefer, given the changes in the, in the project and you're moving from office to residential or whatever, they may say, we would like you to file a, a new notice of intent, and we would do so. They may also say, just like they did on, on Restaurant Depot, we would prefer that you, you proceed under an amendment to the existing order of conditions. That's, that's what we're trying to do, is just preserve either route. I totally agree that we have a future, a future process.
This is a substantial change of the project, from its original approved subdivision. So both of these buildings, this application and the Restaurant Depot, are substantial changes from the original approval. Right? That's a substantial change. So...
I, I, I don't, I don't know enough of the plans to know that.
From a use standpoint, but also when you, when you're taking, when you're going from office to, to, I'll call it a mixed juice because of the Restaurant Depot, but then you're shooting over to the residential application, that is a substantial change from the original order of conditions that were issued. Now saying that, you're right, we can just condition this and leave it in the hands of the Conservation Board, but I found it interesting, the same that, the same issue that we had with Robcham when we first addressed the line of sight two years prior to his filing, and then again, at his filing, and then again, by the fifth meeting, something was finally done. And we held everything up, because our own engineering firm, our, the, the town engineer actually had to lay it out with the town planner, because they did not wanna spend the time. That frustrates the heck out of me, that we cannot get the cooperation. And when I asked about the wetlands here, right from the start, nobody wanted to do anything. Now we're here coming to the end, and we're asking the same question, and nobody's willing to do anything. You wanna leave it up to the Conservation Board, that's fine, and if the Conservation Board turns around and makes you file a new order of conditions, or a new letter of intent, a notice of intent, all of this could then change again. And then we're right back to where we were before. Building, lines may change, drainage will change, everything could change. So, it's kinda like putting the cart before the horse when it comes to the wetland situation. I get it, you have an order of conditions, the Restaurant Depot got, got by with using an amended order of conditions, and I believe you're gonna try and do it there. We could probably condition you to go out and have this re-flagged and provide you with a, a notice of intent. I'd like a comment from CEI concerning that, so that this, the entire board has an idea of what may or may not happen. We may lose that, that particular, that particular fight, but I'd like some clarity from CEI concerning that. Because I know they've both been talking to each other.
Sure, so...
Why don't you grab the microphone, Tim, give him the microphone.
So, you want me to start, just coming specifically on the question of a new delineation, or the question of notice, new notice of intent versus amended?
Right from the start, if you'd like to.
Okay. So I guess, the primary issue here, and everything else falls under it, is this question of, you know, does this go forward as an amended NOI, or a brand-new notice of intent? And I think the, the guidance is fairly clear on that. So, the way that reads, you know, there's a condition, general condition that's in every notice of intent that says, you know, and I'm, I'm reading here from my letter, "Any change to the plans identified in Condition 13," that speaks to the plan set and conditions. "So any change to the plans in Condition 13 shall require the applicant to inquire of the Conservation Commission in writing whether the change is significant enough to require a new notice of intent." So, you're correct, I mean, this is in the purview of the Conservation Commission, they can review this, and it's, that's their jurisdiction. So when it comes to DEP guidance on which way they fall on that, I think that's even clearer. Their guidance states that if the determination is made that the project purpose or scope has substantially changed, or that the interests of, interest specified in the Wetlands Protection Act are not protected, then the issuing authority should not issue the amendment, but should require a new, the filing of a new notice of intent. So here, as you said, if you've got a new project purpose, you've gone to residential, new configuration of buildings, new location of buildings, new offsets from the various resource areas and buffer zone, to me, that clearly meets the guidance that says, you know, you've, you've changed the scope substantially. So, that right there is a standard that the Conservation Commission is gonna have to look at and determine if, in their opinion, they need to require a new NOI. They could, in their jurisdiction, decide that they don't wanna do that, but I think the guidance clearly, you know, if you're asking my opinion, which I guess you are, my opinion is that they...
So I, that's what you're getting paid for.
A new NOI would be required, that's my recommendation. The question about wetland delineation is a bit murkier, a little more clear as of the end of today, after getting, having some back and forth with Leldon Langley at Mass DEP. So, what, what I'm hearing from him is that this is not a crystal clear-cut case, I mean, you're basically at the point where these things could get determined by case law. But in general, if you've got a wetland delineation that hasn't expired, meaning the original order of conditions...
From '07.
Right. Gets a, an extension or an amendment, or any combination of these things through the years, but there's a continuous chain of documents with none of them ever expiring, that generally speaking, that wetland delineation still holds. It's within the Conservation Commission's purview to still request a new delineation. At that point, you get into the business of, you know, is there an appeal, does it go to an adjudicatory hearing, and so on, at which point the town has to decide, you know, how much in legal fees it's worth to go that route. But, the guidance from DEP based on, you know, the work they did on the Permit Extension Act of 2012, is that in general, unless something expires, the delineation does hold up. And that is, that is a variation from my original review letter, with clarification from DEP. So that's where we're at now on that.
And, and, I'm, by the way, I'm not trying to create more work for anybody. The reason that, that I think this is just a hot button for me is, when I sat with the town engineer, and he was pretty adamant of some of the changes, based on what he's witnessed, that is what's flagged this. And maybe it's a simple aspect of both of you getting to the end, town engineer, going over it, seeing if he's got any other questions, but my suggestion concerning this board would be that, you know, I think we'll pull this over to the Conservation Boards for their purview.
Yeah, the really, the question is, do you want to, as a condition of your comprehensive permit, require a new notice of intent, or simply require that they submit to the Conservation Commission for appropriate review? That's probably the two best...
That's probably the way, the way it should be going.
As, as long as it's gonna go to the Conservation Commission to make a decision on whether or not there should either be a new notice of intent, or can be to handle under amendment, I don't have a problem with that, I think that...
But I think the language in the decision needs to clearly identify that we have some concerns.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and the question of a notice of intent, new notice of intent.
Well, again, there's two approaches here. One is that you actually put a condition in saying that the applicant shall submit a new notice of intent, or the, the less firm one, which says that they have to submit to the Conservation Commission for a determination as to what further relief is needed, which still has that option if Conservation Commission in good faith feels it's only an amendment, then that's what it is. You don't have jurisdiction over the decisions the Conservation Commission might make.
Right.
You arguably do or don't have the ability to say you shall submit a new notice of intent. But again, so those are your two choices, new notice of intent, or simply the language in there that says that you have these concerns, and you're requiring that they at least submit to the Conservation Commission, decide, with the Conservation Commission to decide whether it's a new notice of intent or an amendment.
Dave?
And we have, I just, so I just wanna go back and, and provide a little bit of color on, in terms of what we've done, because we, we have taken your request seriously, and so we did go out and engaged Matt Varell, who did the original wetland delineation at the site, had him walk the site, delineate. So, prior to that, we had the site re-flagged by a surveyor, so that they could establish the wetland flag line that was originally...
So that was done.
That was done. We then, after the site was surveyed by, I believe it was VHB who did the original site plan design, once the site was re-surveyed, and re, and the, the survey line re-established, we had Matt go out and then compare what the old wetland flagging line was to what he, in his opinion, thought it was today. And based on that analysis, so we did do that for the area that was in question...
It impacted for the residential side, okay.
Correct. And so based on that analysis, he felt that, you know, within a couple of feet, more or less, the wetland area had, had, the delineation was still valid. And, and so based on that, you know, we felt relatively comfortable that we weren't wildly off in terms of where that delineation was. With respect to the Conservation Commission, and maybe one of the reasons why they elected to pursue an amendment for the Restaurant Depot site, and we've seen this in other locations, in other projects, rather, is, and it applies here very much so, is that there's a significant amount of history that's gone in with that DEP filing over the years, that the Conservation Commission may or may not want to retain as part of a new filing. So they may say, file, file a new NOI, but take all of the prior DEP history from the existing NOI, and, and, you know, import that, if you will, into the new filing. Or they may say, we don't wanna lose that information until an amendment is appropriate, but we're still gonna make you go out, potentially, and re-delineate, we're still gonna do all the things according to the guideline. But, what we don't wanna do is put ourselves in a position where, if we're financing this at some point down the road, and we've got a lender that's looking at a comprehensive permit condition that says you have to get a new NOI, but the Conservation Commission actually says, we're okay with an amendment, that they then see that as, well, you're not in compliance with the comprehensive permit, and so, you know, it, it can create headaches for us in terms of financing.
Do you have the wetlands delineated from, on a new plan?
No, so, so I'm Matt Varell from Lucas Environmental. So just to kinda follow up, I guess, on a couple of things here. First, I really agree with, despite the fact that Mr. Hartzell and I had some disagreements, I think, in sort of our memos going back and forth, I think everything that Mr. Hartzell just said, I agree with, as far as, you know, the guidance is clear that says Conservation Commission has the authority to determine what's needed if, if the project changes. And I think the project understands that, and fully intends to go back to the commission and say, this is exactly what's changed, you know, this is a fairly significant different program, here's the limit of impacts, you know, these, the wetlands are gonna be filled, this is the mitigation that's gonna occur, and get guidance from the commission. If the commission says a new notice of intent, then it's a new notice of intent. If they say an amendment works, it's an amendment. So I don't think, I don't think we really disagree on that at all, and I think your consultant is making that recommendation. I wanna put words in your mouth, but that seems like, what I was interpreting you were saying, is that, that's what the guidance says.
That is what the guidance says. I mean, it's, it's pretty clear on that. You know, and it, it actually is a little bit more clear too, I mean, it's right in your order of conditions, it says that, you know, if you have any change to your plans, you, you shall go before them.
Right.
It's, this is not a, hey, we're willing to do this, this is, you guys, it's, it's a requirement of your order.
Right, and I think, and I think the, that was the applicant's intention, I don't think it was any ever a thought that, oh, we'll just, we've got an order of conditions, we'll just go ahead and build this thing without ever talking to Congress.
Well, then, if you've already, if you've delineated the wetlands, and have updated and delineated the wetlands on this site...
So that, that is, that has not occurred. So, as, as Israel said, the, the portion of the site that I went back and reviewed was the area Mr. Hartzell had gone out originally, he had a question between Wetland 6, which is the isolated wetland proposed to be filled, and Wetland 2. He felt that there was potentially a connection between those two that would be a significant change, because that would take Wetland 6 from being, sort of falling in a certain regulatory clause, an isolated wetland, would make it a border vegetated wetland, and it changes significantly the regulatory sort of protections of that. So that was what I focused on. So, Teterius Company had VHB go out and relocate all the flags along the Wetland 2 and Wetland 6 area, so that I could go back and look at that specifically, and see if there was any connection that had formed between those two. And that was the task that I was given to really look at.
But that's not been plotted on a plan? That's not been put on a plan yet?
Well, the, the wetland flags that are shown on the plan are those wetland flags that I was looking at.
So they're basically unchanged, or, or minor, or minor changes?
I, I mean, anytime you go out and flag a wetland, any wetland scientist will tell you, there's a range, you know, where a flag, you hang a flag here one week, you come back two months later, you might move it over five feet in some direction. So there's always sort of that little play in the line. But I didn't find anything that changed significantly that would certainly connect those two wetlands, or really, if I was re-flagging those lines, I'd probably be within five or 10 feet of any of the existing flags. Some of them may actually move down, some of them could move up, but it's all within sort of that professional discretion that you...
So based on the original plans that were filed, is there any way that you can put those, the new delineations on that plan, or the updated delineations, is that possible? Or it's not computerized to do that?
What I'm saying, I didn't re-delineate anything, I went out and looked at the...
You just updated.
I went and looked at the flags where they exist from the original delineation, and made a call on, would I move these flags or not? And I didn't move any of them.
Okay. All right. Matt clears it up. Dave, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. So, let's get down to the bottom line. Well, engineers, is there a problem? I mean, we're talking about all kinds of processes, and do we have a problem with wetlands, with what you've got laid out with this project right now, your best guess?
We don't think so.
Well?
So I guess what, what got us here is, when we did our site walk back in the spring, what I observed up there was, and, and I will say, you know, in fairness, I was not tasked at that time to do a formal wetland delineation. We were looking at a lot of things site-wide, you know, the, the whole, the whole enchilada. So, when we got up to that area by the isolated wetland number six, and then kinda working down gradient in the, sort of like the lowest part of the V that you could follow topographically down to Wetland 2, what I observed right out of the gate was, I think, what you observed, there's a, you know, a dominance of sweet pepper bush, which is a potato wetland plant. Now this is, this is, as you mentioned in your letter, this is one of those species that is just on the wetland side of the spectrum of upland plants to wetland plants. So, but it is categorized as a planted, if you've got that as your dominant community, it shows up as a, as a check for yes, wetland community plant. It does creep up into the uplands, but it also does quite well in really wet wetlands too. So it's, it's one of those, it's a very adaptable plant. So with that is sort of the initial, sort of like trigger to kinda like have the radar up, we, a little more carefully followed that low V, you know, connection down to Area 2. So what we're talking about is kind of a amorphous, you know, polygon of that isolated wetland, and a much broader area for Wetland 6, that's a border... and a much broader area for Wetland Six, that's a bordering wetland. What we're talking about is a fairly narrow band, quite, quite narrow band in a very rocky area. So, you know, for whoever is delineating the site, as, you know, it's a tough site. I will, I will put it, put it like that. It's a, it's a really difficult site. But you've got a dominance of a plant that shows up as a wetland plant. And as you're following that narrow channel, you see other species. There's carrick species, there's fagnum moss. And there's, you know, a weak, but in my opinion, definable, you know, channel that you can follow all the way down pretty easily. It wasn't hard to do. The only thing that makes it tricky to follow is the fact that there's rocks and things even up to boulder size all over the place. So what you might see as an impressed line in the ground of an intermittent channel or whatnot is a little bit hard to see in that kind of terrain. So based on that, just sort of called this as an item of interest. Something that, you know, as we talked about the overall process, that this, you know, new proposed development, the residential development, would need to go in for new NOI. The recommendation was, if you're going to do that, you really should take a closer look at those wetlands and get them reflect. That brings us up to the conversation I had at about 4:30 PM today of getting some, a little more legal guidance on that from Mass DEP, which sort of shifts my, my recommendation on that regard. So the question, do we have a problem? It's, it's really more of an administrative and legal question at this point. If legally, DEP's guidance was that yes, at this point, when you file for new NOI, you do need to flag those wetlands again. You might find some things of interest there. You might find a connection that previously wasn't identified. If you don't have to flag those wetlands again, if legally that line stands and is valid, I think the rest of it really just comes down to having proper Conservation Commission review of the development as a whole and all the other features, you know, erosion controls, where the storm waters are outlet and so on.
So what you're telling me is that you're fairly satisfied that with all the information that the conversation can make an intelligent decision about the situation, whether they can go along with where, how it is now, or an amendment, or if they needed a new filing?
Yes, I think the commission is clearly the right place for that decision to be made. They can also make their own decision. If they want to have a follow-on discussion with Leldon Langley at DEP about what their options are and where the legal gray areas may exist with regard to the question of new delineation, then that's also within their purview. I think I've taken it as far as I can do, you know, as far as getting the most recent guidance from him. And the way he left it was, is that, you know, it's, it's clearly in the Congress Court.
So everything has been done so far that can be done, quiet, pushing this off to the Conservation?
That is my opinion.
And I think the, I think a motion to, to, concerning this issue should be, I think the motion should indicate that the Milford Conservation Board will be the responsible party concerning any amendment or any notice of intent. And therefore, and I think what we should do is supply them with the proper documentation that we've gotten today, tonight, from our consultants, along with their consultants, and then they can make the proper decision on what they want to do. Well, we as a board, I feel, we're not missing anything. We've, you've put the point right on the issue and I think we know where it's got to go.
Right. Yeah, it's, and it may be that even within the broad general conditions we have now, there's probably one or two that require that they comply with all the requirements of the Conservation Commission. And if there's not, then there will be.
So I think that would be the motion that we would, we would follow. So Charlie, do you have a motion concerning that? Well, I, I. We'll have the motion from the, the.
I just wanted in there, make sure that there's a condition that they, the applicant, comply with the requirements of the Conservation Commission.
And that has to be a specific one so it doesn't get lost in anything else.
Right. Which may be there, but I will.
We'll dress it up a little bit. But more importantly, I think that both their consultants' reports and our consultant reports are supplied to the Conservation Board. So everybody's upfront on what the status is, okay?
And, and just to assist the board, we, we had volunteered a condition along those lines, maybe not exactly with the same language you're using, but in special condition D four.
What page you're on?
On 23. It shows a 23 of 23 of the red line, but the red line goes on longer than that.
Yeah, it was pretty lengthy with the fingers today. You? Twenty, you said page 23?
23 of 23, yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
It may not be exactly what you want, but I just wanted to point out.
We'll work through the language.
There's something in there.
Instead of knowledge, you may require it, but it's just, you know.
We seem to be all on the same page. Okay, as we know, that the applicant is walking, is working cooperatively with the Milford Water Company. It's outlined here, you know, what they're, what they've been doing, including Tater and Howard. Is there anything else here that needs to be brought to light that needs to be incorporated in here on page five?
Where are you, Dave? You're on page five? Everything that you have in here, I think, well, a lot of it has to do ultimately with the question of the number of units. And a lot of this are, these are findings, of course, they're not conditions. So some of this is going to key off of what your board ultimately decides.
All right, well then, now that we've gone through the wetlands, and I, I agree with concerning the percentage aspect of what we did with Rob Sham on the unit count, proportionately to have it the same. So we'll, I mean, if someone wants to make a motion, that we.
Yeah, you need, you need to find, if you're going to go that route, have the same percentage, which sounds like it's 9%, and if it is, it sounds like it's 242.
242 units.
Question is, are you then another part of that? If that's going to be the new limit, are you also going to have a provision as they seeking, which will allow them, if they have a private well, to go up to the 272?
I can't, I can't. I'm not in favor of 272. I mean, a reduction of that, I'd agree to, but I'd leave that to any board member if they want to, they want to chime in on it. I don't know what other board members feel. I don't mean to be doing. Oh, okay. I think 242 meets it, meets it in the middle. And I think we can, we can deal with that because I think when we start talking more numbers, all you're going to do is get caught up. Well, again, the biggest reason for the reduction has been the site challenges. Right. The traffic. Right. The, this, in general, the site itself, so. It has nothing to do with the water. Right. Is what you're saying. It's not just the water. Right. Right. Okay. So if I get this straight, 242 is what we're recommend, well, is what they have. But if they have their own water, they want to go up to 272. But you want to go somewhere in the middle if they get their own water, from 242 to 272?
I'll just go 242.
There's 242 period.
Period. 242 is what I'm hearing.
Is that a motion, Charlie, 242? I'd make the motion that we go with 242. There's a motion for 242, whether it's, whether it's public or private. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
John's second.
All right. So John's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not anyone else? Moving on?
Well, that'll, having done that, then I'll go back with Chris, I'll go with him, in terms of changing the findings in there to reflect, to reflect all of that. So the next changes really don't come up, I think, that I've highlighted until, I don't know. Let me see. I'm up to page 10, 11. Let me see what this one was. Page 11, number six. Yeah. Yeah, that's the condition that, again, it's, it's in all of these, well, the other two, which simply says no foundation or building permit shall be issued. The way they propose rewording it, if connecting to the Milford Water Company for water supply for the project. I don't recommend that language. I would just leave it as is.
My concern on the private water, and again, if they can get private water and they avoid the Milford Water Company, all, all the blessing to them. I'm only concerned if we're, if it's affecting an aquifer that's affecting the town of Milford's drinking water.
Yeah.
That is an issue that I have.
That's an issue that.
That's the only issue I have.
On any private water supply, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong here, they're going to need approval, not only the Conservation Commission, but I think DEP is going to be heavily involved in that decision of whether or not they can do this. And the Milford Water Company, this site being right on the Milford Water Supply is going to be heavily involved in that kind of decision. So those issues will be, in my review, we review very carefully by at least those three bodies, if not the Army Corps of Engineers too, I'm not sure exactly how they'd fit in. And this one, I would, you know, it's, maybe the rewording that might be done here to reflect that possibility is started the same way we did. No foundation or building shall be issued until the applicant has demonstrated that the Milford Water Company or successor entity will provide sufficient supply for domestic use or fire suppression or sets shall be made fully available by a private well, something to that effect.
Okay. But it doesn't affect the number of units?
No, we've done that. You've done the number.
So it's not.
You've done the number.
242.
So I would reword it something to the effect of what.
Yeah, so you can work out that language.
We can work out that language.
We just want to have some kind of fail-safe in case we never get there with the water company.
Right, that's.
Conference to get to work with the water company?
And I agree with you. I agree with you. I agree with you. May I ask a question? In the event you do have your own water, and what if something happens? What's your backup plan? That's their. I know it's their problem. What about the people who live there?
So there'd be a requirement for a storage tank.
They would have storage tanks.
Which would be of a size.
The truck be in. What kind of longevity? Size that the casino is going to put in.
And, and there would be multiple, thank you, my engineer, there would be multiple wells, so you wouldn't be relying.
So strictly on one.
Strictly on one well. And, and these will be bedrock wells, from what I understand. And bedrock wells may not necessarily follow the same line, so you'd be tapping into a different source.
We would probably require them to come back for an amendment if they've got to go to storage tanks for locations. You, you might. I mean, because what if they wanted to put up a, you know.
It'd be underground.
You do underground tanks?
Unless, unless we discovered that it was all ledge, in which case, yes, we'd be backing.
Okay.
Of the planning work or the ZBA, if that's the case.
So I'll reword that condition consistent with what I just said.
Okay. Construction activity, I think we've already covered that. It's been pretty standard.
What are you looking at, Dave?
Number three on 11.
Oh, yeah, just to, I didn't want to.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Hide anything from the board. It's because it's tricky to see in the, and mine's in black and white.
So it said seven, and who changed it to six?
We proposed to change it an hour earlier on the Monday through Friday and on Saturday from seven to six, Monday through Friday, and from 8:30 to 7:30 on Saturday. When we were thinking about who are the abutters to our site, it's ourselves and 495 and Restaurant Depot. And so really, no sensitive abutters to starting an hour earlier. It just cuts down the overall construction.
The only thing I'm concerned about is heavy truck traffic.
On Cedar Street?
Then again, it's regular normal traffic anyways at 6:00 in the morning, so it doesn't matter. I'm okay. If there's, if there's an issue, Jerry, I'd like the availability. If there are complaints, that they'd work with us to be able to amend those hours. That's all. Make it sense, as long as it's sensible. The landscaping plans, guys.
I flag this with Mr. Chairman, just because what we had before was submit to, present to the ZBA. They're proposing a change to submit to the Building Commissioner. And I didn't know how strongly the board felt about.
Well, I really think that the ZBA should at least be, since they're permitting this or, under their authorization, I think it should be in coordination with the Building Commissioner. At least getting it through the chairman or the vice chairman.
Well, if it's going to be, if it was going to be reviewed by the zoning board, you certainly would have, the town engineer would review it first and give, give you his recommendations. What they were suggesting, and I'm not, nothing wrong with it, they're saying, you know, just have the town engineer solely make the, do the review. And I thought, I had the impression that the board wanted.
Town engineer is fine if that, but as long as it's in there.
It's also, it also says here that so long, that that would be the case so long as it's consistent with what.
With the others.
With what we showed originally. So.
Correct.
If we're, if we're basically staying true to the original plans, then just goes to the town engineer. If it's something of a significant change.
Well, I think it's even better than that for the board. Plans of record right now are the things that are in front of the board.
Right.
But later, we're going to get to a condition that when, you know, everything that you have shows 272, and we need to move forward with plans that show 242. They're going to come back to this board. And you're going to sign off on those plans, that they will become the updated plans of record. So when we say, the final landscaping plan should be presented to the Building Commissioner, that will be to be consistent with the plan, the updated plans that are going to come before this board. So you'll have a chance to look at landscaping again.
So you're okay with that change?
It's got to go to town planner, town, town engineer.
Yeah. The question is, do you want it then to come to you? That's the only question. After that.
It doesn't have to because we've already seen it.
But if that's the consensus of the board.
If the board's okay with it, then to go to the town engineer and the building commissioner, that's fine. I mean, I don't think we need the dissect that too much. There's a question going back to the 240, and I'm trying to remember what that was. Okay. All right, moving on. On 14, anything changing on 14?
Yeah, they're looking at that D at the top right now, which flows from number 21. Part of the issues of building permits, the applicant shall, if connected to Milford Water, for water supply, have demonstrated. Well, you want the demonstration of sufficient capacity, no matter how it's connected, whether it's the Milford Water Company.
Correct.
The successor or the private well. So I'll reword that to do that.
It's probably the same language that you were going to do on number six earlier.
Essentially the same, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, page 15.
Still on, no, still on 22, number 22. I'm looking at it now to see what the change is. Again, there's that caveat they put in the middle, if connected to the Milford Water Company, product water supply. Well, we want, they could have the sufficient capacity, whether it's the Milford Water Company.
Or private.
The town of Milford years from now, or private. So I'm going to do a reword, we'll do a reword on that too to make that clear.
We, we are in any, no matter where we get our water, we're giving it to the fire chief.
Yeah, but it wouldn't necessarily be the case here with that parenthetical reference.
No, no, no. The way the parenthetical is, it only modifies the Milford Water Company. So we're always giving our flow test to the fire chief.
We'll make, we'll take a look at that and make sure that that works. I don't know what should go. On page 15, number 31.
We're striking the middle part of it.
Yeah, this is just, we now have to clarify, this is the 242. The two, the two spaces, two per unit will be part of it.
Oh, I know what I wanted to bring up under the 240 units. Have you thought about where those units are going to be shaved? Because I know the town planner reached out to me and he'd like to see those units being shaved off the front buildings of the 495, facing 495, if it's possible?
What'll end up happening is, we'll probably have them.
Lowered one floor?
Like stepped down.
One building or all of them?
Uh, probably one.
So the request would be if you could do one of those that's facing 495?
Yeah.
And probably the furthest one away? Because I think that may help for fire protection?
We probably want to have the tallest one fronting 495.
You've got two of them there.
Yeah. Okay, so one of, I guess one of them would.
Because they're both, well, your largest built, your largest unit building is the one that's close to the Deer Street Road.
Right, I mean, they're essentially the same size, the one, the one in the middle is small.
Are you planning on changing the sizes of the buildings eventually? Are you planning on changing the sizes of the buildings eventually? Are you changing anything concerning garage parking underneath?
We don't have garage parking underneath. It's all surface parking.
Okay.
So what we would do is we would shift, we would eliminate a floor, or a portion of a floor. So you might have a step down on the end, so we could, we could certainly work with that.
Work with, just try and see if we can do it.
Sure.
I'm not going to hold you to it, but see if we can work it. Okay.
On that next page, number, page sixteen, that D at the top. Chris and I were talking about that language, we spoke briefly today, and I wanted to think about it, just the question of any, any rights to appeal. But they, the change they put in there for actual reasonable fees, that's fine. I mean, of course, there should be the actual fees. The first part of it, we'll work on that offline.
There shouldn't be any appeal process, I hope.
Well, we hope there's no appeals.
All right, we certainly feel the same.
Yeah.
Thirty-two, same thing?
Yeah, let's see.
Yeah, basically, once the plans are in record, the updated reflect the filing account.
Yeah, they got to, they have to break a lot out of this, which they haven't done yet, so they will do.
So we'll give them time to do that.
Yeah, this, this, yeah. The question here might be whether or not you want to review it before they do it, because this simply says that after they do it, you shall endorse. But should you want to review it prior to?
I mean, certainly, they can send it over to, for us to take a look at. I would think that would be the right thing to do.
And I, and I would anticipate that, because remember, we're not, under the, under these plans, we're not at two spaces per unit. So as we reduce the number of units and increase the amount of parking, you know, there'll be some little tweaks, and that will have to come back to your board. We want to make sure that we're drawing a boundary that encompasses the plans that have been approved by you, so it's sort of, we, we get the plans.
Still a work in progress.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on. Looks like we're on twenty-two.
Page twenty, I think there's something in here. I'm not sure what that is.
This one, Jerry?
Page twenty-two, it looks like there's a blue line on that F.
I've got nothing on twenty.
That was just a.
Oh, F is not red, it's just.
Just a sentence fragment.
Oh, was it a sentence fragment?
Yeah, it was just a title.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Twenty-two?
Twenty-two, yeah, that, we, we had a discussion today about irrigation, and I indicated the board had particular interest in irrigation and how it was done. And this has language which would, that the change they want, either develop an onsite irrigation well, within talks in terms of, or into an agreement with the Milford Water Company, provide water for irrigation in compliance with DEP regulations.
Milford Water Company hasn't allowed it.
Right now, they don't allow it. And what I indicated in my discussions with Chris today was that your board may have, you know, speak to the board, may have an attitude that you don't care if the Milford Water Company allowed it, you don't want public water being utilized on the irrigation system. So that was my only thinking in terms of that.
Yeah, well, being consistent with the other two, I think we have private irrigation.
Yeah, well, the language that is in now on this is the language from the other two. In, in this, what, what they proposed would, if the water company allowed it, which I don't think they will, but if they did allow it, then they would be allowed to have, be able to utilize that supply for irrigation. What you've done, effectively precluded that possibility. That's the only reason I wouldn't agree, I couldn't agree to it without your board.
The thinking, you know, on our part is simply, you know, we may be stroking a million-dollar check to the water company and hoping that.
If you're paying for it, you want it.
Buys us at least, you know.
That's understandable, yeah. Want to have any comment on that?
The board has to think too, in the perspective of, you know, everybody else in town being denied the opportunity to use public water for irrigation, and you maybe being allowed to do it, and that's not necessarily.
That's where we don't look good.
That's not a good look. Right now, everybody is denied that opportunity, so.
I, I understand. I go, I, I don't, I do understand it, I think.
We just wanted to give the rationale of.
Yes, the rationale, you know, we're providing, you know, five hundred and seventy-five thousand excess gallons to the town.
Right. That makes all this much more palatable.
Okay, twenty-three.
Yeah, now, this actually segues nicely to the separate set of special conditions, possible special conditions, which I gave you back in July.
Yep.
With that, and obviously, you've taken care of the last one, that additional possible special condition. The number one that I have suggested is really taken out of the sewer commissions, the Taten Howard and Sewer Commission requirements. Not necessarily, so it's a little more to it than just the applicant shall install a ten-foot diameter storage tank, so. You know, I would recommend that, and I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, Israel or Chris, in terms of that number one.
I have. I think, so we had received a letter from Taten Howard that, that supersedes the data that's referenced here. Let's see.
That's the July ninth.
Oh, the July ninth.
Yeah.
So.
So it's both, like, you know, see, obviously.
Yeah, the, the July nine.
Control's over.
Is the one that, we're okay with, with the recommendation here. We just have one, I guess, clarification with respect to the installation of the seven-and-a-half horsepower pump. So I, I think, my recollection from that meeting was that we're going to have the adjoining storage tank, which is going to be the ten-foot diameter tank, we're going to locate it in the area that we agreed to with, with John Manini, and, but that it would be a gravity-fed connection, so that there wouldn't be a necessity for another pump. I think that's the, the recollection of our engineer, who was also at the, at the hearing, so.
You want to button that up together?
I guess we'd like to just go back and button that up.
Fine.
And just make sure that we're.
Yeah, we can't do that here tonight, so we can look at those letters if we need to talk to John Manini, but let's nail that down, yeah.
Yeah, we can nail that down and get that in.
And, and the second one I had in mind is this, again, it's two-point-oh spaces per dwelling unit, that's, that's, that's simple. They obviously have no problem with that, that's agreed to. And I, the crossing on Deer Street, this is, this may be done from my bicycle rides down there, right?
It is.
Yeah, about time. I mean, we could, God, they're working on that forever. So three is, so two and three, I think you would prove. Then the requirement, probably, I probably took this one out of one of the CEI recommendations, but submit a notice of project change to MIPA office, is that any problem?
No.
Okay, so two, three, and four, like, sound like are no problem. And a suitable bicycle lane on Deer Street, and a continuation of Deer Street in the project area suitable, and properly marked for bicycle traffic on the intrudent setup. That last one, is that a difficulty at all?
I think.
This came out of the Upper Charles Trail.
Right. I think we would just want to clarify that it would be from the intersection, from the intersection, so from the bike path, where the Upper Charles bike path intersects with Deer Street.
Yep.
To the pro, to our project site.
Right.
Right.
So I, I just, I'll have one little tiny.
So it, I think, Israel, what you're saying is, the applicant shall establish a suitable bicycle lane on Deer Street.
At the.
You know, from the.
Yep, from.
From the Milford Upper Charles Trail intersect.
The park, the park.
And then it goes on from there. I think that's.
So those five, with one to be reviewed a little further, would be added to the special conditions here.
Yeah, yeah, what's considered suitable? What would be considered suitable?
In relation to what, Dave?
Language, a suitable bicycle lane. Have we, have we identified what we consider suitable?
Well, I think.
That's pretty broad.
It is broad, which generally, we, we would want to try and button that up, but I think, you know, what we would look to do is just.
Can we put some language in there that the developer will work with the town planner, in coordination with?
Oh, with the Upper Charles Trail.
Yeah.
Group, actually.
Yeah. Can we put that in there, so that, so.
In coordination with.
So neither one makes a decision that, well, I feel this is suitable, and he says, well, no, this is suitable. Let's get them both around the round table and work on something that's, that's cost-effective and suitable for everybody.
That's good, that's good. Yeah, that's exactly, you know, the Upper Charles Trail group, that's why we know to review it, they should.
Right.
Uh. I also have just one other proposal to number fifteen, which didn't get actually captured in this draft, it was something that.
What page are we on now?
I'm sorry, it's on page thirteen. So I'm going to back that. And it is, it's number fifteen, condition fifteen.
Page twelve of the red line that you're looking at.
Page twelve of the red line?
Well, okay.
Fire hydrants?
The fire hydrant, so this is really just more of a logistical thing with respect to at what point in time the fire hydrants are functional, and we totally understand that, that you're going to want to have, and we're going to want to have, at least a functioning or, or several functioning fire hydrants at the time that we start framing and building. The question is really, I think the way that this is worded, we'd have to have all of the fire hydrants for the entire site.
Oh, if it's phased, like, if it's similar to the others, there's a phasing process. As long as you have fire protection that's adequate to supply your phasing, I think I'd be okay with that.
And that's all we're proposing. We just want to.
That consistent with what we did with. Rob, Jim?
Yeah. Looking at a different fire hydrant.
You, you might be looking at some other draft.
No. Okay, I think we get to the same place anyway. You're right.
Yeah, you look at the end of it, in phase, if necessary.
I'm sorry. No change in it, no. Okay, is that okay?
All right, so.
Let's see, the only one left, I think, is a page twenty-three at the bottom there, laps, which they propose. As you know, the comprehensive is good for three years, it can be extended. They propose, the way they propose it here, they would have a right to an extension for three years if they've not been able to do the, the water company hasn't been able to do the work. Again, I don't have, necessarily have any problem with that, but I think your board should be aware of that and make a decision as to whether or not you think that's appropriate.
Wouldn't that happen with all of them?
It's, it's not in there.
It's not automatic.
It's damn close to automatic, frankly, you know, for some period of time, although you're not forever.
Right.
You know, they can appeal a denial of an extension to the Housing Appeals Committee, but this was, I, I'm not criticizing. I don't think I'm comfortable with an automatic three. I, I think, I think them coming in, if they need a year, come to us for a year. If they need another year, come to us for a quick, another year. I mean, automatic three, I'm not, I don't know if I'm comfortable.
Well, it sounds you don't want to be committed to three.
I may be dead by then.
But maybe we can develop language, you know, we all may be, I don't know. Maybe we can develop language that says, not that they're entitled to it, but there's an expectation that if, just as they say, if the Milford Water Company's not been able to perform the work, that they will apply for, and the board will seriously consider the possibility of extension. So without.
No, I, I don't want someone being financially on the hook, and then this board saying, well, no, we didn't give them a three-year, a three-year period because it was something that they could not control. That's just not, that's just.
If they've invested five hundred thousand dollars and it's not quite done yet, you mean, you're going to be hard pressed not to.
Certainly not going to be putting them out to dry. That's just ridiculous, so.
What, what we're talking about.
Maybe there's some language in there that you can put in there, that in the event they're waiting for some completion aspects of the project that it can self-extend until that timeframe is satisfied, something along that line.
Isn't the issue, the way we discussed it, is you can't get a, a foundation permit.
Well, that's different. If, if, if three years from now, they've got no prospects for water, you may not extend it perhaps. But if they've, if it's not going forward because their water company is still working on the project that they funded, then you probably will extend it. You following me?
All right.
So.
And at that point, we will have gone to the Conservation Commission.
Right, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Project change with NIPA, develop construction plans.
It'll be all ready to go, except you won't have water.
Yeah, right. Okay. Was that the last one?
I think that's the last change. There are things that we still have to go over in terms of, the list of documents.
Right, but there is something that I need to bring up to the board members, and I'd like to get a vote, since all three of these projects may or may not be built over the next three years. I'd like to see the opportunity that Jerry continues to be retained in addressing these as they move forward, whether they're at certain levels of construction. I think Jerry, Jerry, as being the forty-B coordinator, still needs to be involved as this thing moves forward. So if the board members feel that that's appropriate, I'd like to entertain a motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
So we have a motion by mark to retain Jerry Moody's services on a continuing basis for these three forty-B projects.
As required.
Yeah, as required. As, as required and as necessary.
Nothing may be needed for quite a while, but at some point, plans will be submitted, there may be issues that have to be resolved, and I can work with you on that.
With that, I have a motion to have a second.
A second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not unanimous?
That means don't go far.
No, I'm.
One more issue that I'd like to bring up, and I, I, we talked about it earlier, and I, I just want to get my arms around it, maybe we can put it in writing. Are you gentlemen okay with the aspect of, of a landing pad area? Either upon a completion of the phase of the project, of the, of the residential dwellings for emergency, for emergency services only? Whether it be, I'm talking about probably.
Yeah, those, those landing pads are actually a lot more complicated than, than you would think. You can't actually just clear an area because it's got to be stabilized, so that dust doesn't kick up.
Right.
Different things like that. I think what we would be fine doing is working with the fire chief, working out some kind of plan where we've got sort of a crisis management plan, where we designate an area within the site that, you know, the fire chief is, is aware of, the, you know, police chief is aware of, so that, and, and get their input on how they'd like to handle.
What, what I'll do is, I'll, I'll reach out to the chief, I'll, I'll indicate our discussion, and then maybe you can coordinate with him some discussion on how he wants to handle that.
Yep.
And maybe we can incorporate that in, just to make it, because really, I'm more concerned about something catastrophic happening, and we don't have an area to go to, or they don't have an area to go to, where that includes the residents as well, okay?
Makes.
Great, okay, great.
So it sounds like you're not ready, well, we know we're not ready to make a final decision tonight, so it sounds like you need one.
Yeah, we're going to need another meeting. So based on the changes and the discussions tonight, what's comfortable to schedule another meeting?
This was filed on April ninth, so we're still well within the hundred and eighty days.
Yes.
What, what it, what's, let me see, we got, Melissa, you said we're meeting on when?
September twentieth.
You need, do you need? More time? You need nineteenth good? What do you need?
I don't think we need that much time.
You think we can get it all wrapped up? Would you, would you rather go to the twelfth or the nineteenth?
Twelve is fine.
Jerry?
It works for me.
Works for me, yeah.
Twelfth works fine?
Yeah.
Members? Anybody on vacation?
Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday, yeah.
We'll do in room three at six o'clock again, unless we have to move it upstairs, but.
Twelfth and the nineteenth? Twelfth, David.
Yep.
September twelfth?
September twelfth. You said it's six o'clock?
Yeah, we can do six o'clock. And hopefully, you'll, you and Jerry.
We'll have, hopefully have.
Wrapped up and.
Yeah.
It's going very well.
We should have that out to you well before that.
Right.
Okay, good. With that, if there's no more questions, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, Adrian.
Motion by John, seconded by Charlie.
There we go.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.